Well, it's six o'clock, so I guess we'll get started. Hello and welcome to the August 3rd, 2023 meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. I'm Noah Levy. Before we start the meeting, I just want to call your attention, as always, to the first two pages of our agenda, which give the various methods for participating remotely. You can join us by phone. You can raise your hand to speak by phone. You can also join us by Zoom. And you can watch the proceedings on humboldt.ledgestar.com. However, if you are at a computer and do wish to participate in the meeting, it's preferable to use Zoom. That way, you will be following in real time because the Ledge Star feed is 30 seconds or a minute behind live. If you are watching on Ledge Star and want to participate, you'll need to call up by phone a little earlier than than real time. Okay, and with that, I would invite you all to join me for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic in which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, Laura, could we please get a roll call of the commissioners present?
Ivor Scavdon.
Here.
Commissioner Levy.
Here.
Commissioner Landry.
Here.
Commissioner Mulder.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Okay, we have six commissioners at the quorum. That brings us to item C, Agenda Modifications. Director Ford, are there any modifications to the agenda tonight?
We have no modifications to the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Then that brings us to item D, which is Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. At this time, we welcome any comments from members of the audience or on Zoom or phone to speak on matters that are not on our agenda but that are within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Do we have anyone in the audience wishing to speak on matters not on our agenda? Seeing no hands in the room and none on Zoom or phone, I will close public comment on non-agenda items and come to the consent agenda. All right, we have just three items on consent tonight. So as usual, I will just poll the commission and the audience to see if any consent items need to be pulled for a longer discussion or questions. The first item on consent is the review and approval of the July 20th, 2023 action summary. Any comments or questions on that? Nope. Okay, that will remain on consent. Item two is Carlotta Gardens LLC Conditional Use Permit Modification in the Carlotta area. So anyone with questions or comments about that item? Nope, that will stay on consent. And finally, we have the Lucas &amp; Myrtle Mini Storage Center CUP Modification in the Myrtle Town area. Anyone wishing to discuss that item? Okay. Then we have three items on consent, and I would welcome a motion to move that, the consent calendar.
Chair, I make a motion to approve consent calendar as agendas.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Mulder, seconded by Commissioner Landry. Could we get a voice vote for all those in favor of the consent calendar? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Moving swiftly along, that brings us to the only public hearing scheduled for this evening, and this is the Humboldt Reserve LLC project in the Hydesville area. My understanding is that there's going to be a staff report followed by a presentation from the applicants. So thank you, Mr. Santos. I would welcome your presentation now.
Thank you, Charlie. Members of the commission, good evening. Stephen Santos, Senior Planner, presenting the Humboldt Reserve LLC project. I've shared my PowerPoint via Zoom and waiting for it to appear on screen. Excellent. I'm having some technical difficulties. One moment, please. There we go. All right, the project site is located in the Carlotta-Hydesville community planning area, and it takes access directly off of Highway 36. The project site consists of three separate assessor parcels, which make up two legal parcels. All of the parcels have a mixed use, MU, general plan land use designation, and the zoning for the parcels is heavy industrial or MH. The northwest parcel also has a Q combining zone. The project consists of, the project proposal is 235,000 square feet or 5.39 acres of indoor commercial cannabis cultivation to take place in enclosed commercial buildings with odor filtration. There's also ancillary drying and processing uses proposed. Included in the project is a 44,000-square-foot commercial nursery as well as a distribution operation. And I just want to clarify for the public, we had some public comments thinking distribution meant dispensary. This is not a dispensary. This is distribution. The project proposes constructing three new commercial buildings, constructing a pond, expanding an existing building, and the construction will be phased over a minimum of five years. And the construction phasing schedule appears on page 10 of the ISMND. Here's an excerpt of one of the pages from the site plan, and we see the three proposed commercial buildings. Basically, the construction schedule is for the pond, and then building two, and then building one, and then building three. I'm trying to activate my laser pointer there, and it's not working very well, so I'll deactivate it. But you can generally see in the slide where the pond and the buildings are located. Looking at the water sourcing for irrigation, it is sourced from rainwater catchment and dehumidifier reclamation. The proportionality is approximately 2/3 rainwater and 1/3 reclamation. The annual water usage is estimated to be 4.2 million gallons annually, which translates roughly to about 15 gallons per square foot. There will be a 3.12 million gallon rainwater storage pond, and that storage capacity represents 123% of the estimated annual rainwater usage. So we have more rainwater storage than is proposed to be used on an annual basis. The rainwater analysis looked at average rainfall as well as the lowest rainfall year since 1900. Adequate rain can be collected using data from the lowest rainfall year. The rainfall analysis appears on page eight and page nine of the operations plan. The dehumidifier analysis also concludes that up to 140,000 gallons per month can be reclaimed, depending on humidity levels. And so there is a certain degree of elasticity built into the water budget, that some rainwater will carry over year to year in the pond, and so if less water can be collected from the dehumidifiers because of humidity, then there's going to be surplus rainwater. Electricity for the site is provided by PG&E, and it's proposed to be provided through an eligible renewable energy program. The project site is served by an existing dedicated substation exclusively for this site. An engineer did an analysis concluding that peak usage would use approximately 83% of that dedicated substation. And then in this last bullet, here are the numbers that the engineer gave, that the substation has 9,300 kilovolt amps capacity, and with everything plugged in and turned on, we're using about 7.86 megawatts peak load. And this analysis by the engineer can be found in Appendix J of the ISMND. The project is proposed to go on a former mill site that has been follow for a number of years. Adaptive reuse of old industrial sites is one of the goals of the Commercial Cannabis Land Use Ordinance. The project, as proposed, conforms to the reuse performance standards of the CCULUO, and Phase 1 and Phase 2 studies were conducted and no additional actions were recommended. And to give you an example of some of the performance standards for adaptive reuse of industrial sites, they include reusing existing buildings, performing Phase 1 and 2 tests, and ensuring that the cannabis use does not preclude any future industrial use if the cannabis use discontinues. And all of those standards have been met in the proposal. Here's just a sample on-the-ground photo of the site. It's a typical industrial site, flat, impacted, compacted soil with gravel, invasive species of vegetation. I chose this as the representative example for on-the-ground photo because it faces northwest, and this will come up later, just to show the extensive vegetation and tree line on that edge of the property. Moving on to the environmental document, mitigations are proposed and will result in a less-than-significant impact, and there were five categories identified in which mitigations were proposed: air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology soils, and tribal cultural resources. I'll do a quick summary of those proposed mitigations. For air quality, it's primarily about the dust and potential impacts during construction. So the mitigation measures include spraying the ground to control dust, covering haul trucks, regulating vehicle speeds and idle times, and maintaining equipment. For biological resources, though the project itself will be developed in the areas already disturbed and already previously used for industrial use, there is the potential for biological resources nearby. And so there are mitigation measures to perform pre-construction surveys both for amphibians and for nesting birds. And then if any of those are found during the survey, then qualified professionals will need to propose sufficient mitigations, which could be delaying construction or just maintaining a certain buffer. For cultural resources, if cultural resources are found, work must stop, and consultation with tribes and qualified professionals are required. And this includes the standard inadvertent discovery protocols if human remains are For geology and soils, similar to the last mitigation measure, if paleontological resources are encountered, no ground disturbing activities will be allowed in the vicinity until consultation and reporting is provided from a qualified paleontologist. So finally, we did get some significant public comment in the last few days. This is another version of the aerial that I showed at the beginning of the presentation. There is a concentration of comments from the area to the northwest of the project parcel along Fisher Road, so I wanted to show that proximity to the project. And then here's just another view of the same proximity using Google Earth from a slightly different angle, just to get a sense of the topography and the vegetation that exists between that neighborhood and the project parcel. Moving on into the public comments, there were concerns about runoff. The cultivation uses a hydroponic irrigation system that is closed-loop, so no irrigation water will leave the building, and there will be drains built into the system to recapture anything that might spill. But it is designed as a closed-loop system. There were concerns about water source, particularly that, well, what if not enough rainwater can be captured? I just want to make clear that irrigation water cannot be sourced from groundwater or surface water, and if inadequate water is available, the operator must proportionally reduce cultivation. There's a condition of approval on the permit that the operator must demonstrate that they have enough water stored from rainwater before they can begin operation. There's another condition of approval, that the water supply must be metered. There were concerns about odor. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, cultivation occurs in enclosed commercial buildings, or is proposed to occur in enclosed buildings, and using filtration technology. There were concerns about the indoor cultivation operation increasing crime in the vicinity, but staff was unable to obtain or did not receive any statistical data indicating that the proposed use would increase crime more than any other eligible use for the site. There were concerns about customer traffic. As I mentioned earlier, there is no dispensary being proposed, so there's no retail operation. There were concerns about noticing, three separate notices were sent out for this application because it is in a community planning area under the CCULUO. A notice of application was sent out to owners and occupants within 1,000 feet of the site. That notice was sent on March 11th, 2022. We also sent out a notice of the intent to adopt the mitigated NEG deck on June 2nd, and we also sent a notice of project scheduling on July 19th, and also published that in the paper on July 20th. There are different noticing standards for the notice of application, and then the other two notices that went out more recently. And I'll discuss that by using these noticing maps. So for the notice of application, as I mentioned, those go out to 1,000 feet per the standards in the CCULUO, and we can see what that looks like graphically with this map. The other two notices that were sent out more recently are only sent out to 300 feet from the project site, again, because that is the noticing standard for those types of notices. And so we can see that difference, especially along those parcels along Fisher Road on the northwest, where some owners and occupants along Fisher Road did get the notice of application, but didn't necessarily directly get the other notices, but based on reporting of commenters, that the notice of the project was distributed and spread amongst the community and the neighborhood. Additional public comment had concerns about contamination from the old mill. As I mentioned before, there were Phase 1 and Phase 2 studies conducted, and the results of those studies was recommendations for no further action, so there weren't any other recommendations. There were concerns about light. The operations plan does include a light pollution control plan. If the commercial buildings are built with a translucent roof, there will be an interior TARP system to cover that in the evenings, and all security lighting will be appropriately aimed to remain pointed at the property and not to disturb neighboring properties nor disturb wildlife. There were concerns about noise. We did receive a noise source assessment as part of the ISMND, and noise limits are a standard condition of approval because there are noise performance standards in the CCULUO, and that noise condition of approval appears as condition of approval C, as in Charlie C2. And finally, we had some public comment concerns about whether a finding could be made about compatibility with the mixed-use land use designation. With the general plan update, the land use designation changed to mixed-use, but the zoning is still heavy industrial, and the Q zone is still there. So we looked at a number of things, and first, we looked at, well, what are the standards that exist right now? And under the current Q combining zone, general agriculture is specifically called out as a principally permitted use. And cultivation is an allowable use in the MH zone per the CCULUO. So the indoor cultivation is consistent with and compatible with the current zoning. But we also looked at what the implementing zone is going to be, or proposed to be, for the MU designation, and that implementing zone is called mixed-use rural, or MU2. And the standards for MU2 have been adopted by the board, and under an MU2 zone, again, the intended implementing zone for the MU designation, general agriculture is a principally permitted use. Additionally, heavy commercial uses are allowed in an MU2 zone with a conditional use permit, which is what the applicant is requesting. So under the current zone and in the anticipated zone, the proposed project is consistent. And lastly, staff looked at, okay, well, let's also kind of look at what's happening immediately adjacent to this mill site. We have a mosaic of different uses. We still have mill operations on one side, we have agricultural zone property, we have TPZ zone property, so there's quite a mosaic of uses in this vicinity. And staff determined that the indoor cultivation operation will provide a good transition between all of those surrounding land uses. None of those surrounding land uses will impact and interfere with the cannabis cultivation and vice versa, and the indoor cannabis cultivation, if it discontinues in the future, as designed, will not preclude future mixed uses on the site. So staff concluded that there's enough evidence for the commission to make that finding. So the staff recommendation is for the commission to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, find the projects comply with the general plan and zoning policies and regulations, approve the conditional use permit subject to the conditions of approval, and adopt the mitigation monitoring report. And that concludes my presentation, and I will attempt to surrender my screen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Santos, for that presentation. I really do appreciate the thoroughness with which you addressed each of the concerns that I saw raised in public comment. We have a presentation by the applicant and agents coming up, but before we do that, I would invite the commission, or ask the commission if you have any questions right now for staff on that presentation. Yes, Commissioner O'Neill.
I was a little perplexed as to why you would go back to 1900 to study rainfall. I mean, it seems like 20 years would be more representative of current rain, because we know there were some real historical events and rainfalls. I have nothing to prove that rainfalls were greater in 1900 and to 1960, but I'm looking at it, just assume they would. Wouldn't it be better also to look at something that's more current, given climate change and some of the more recent drought years?
I'll let the applicant correct me if I'm wrong, but the rainwater catchment analysis in the operations plan does look at the most recent 20 years of data, and it's within those 20 years that this area in Humboldt County experienced the driest year since 1900. So it's a, as staff, I like to see rainwater catchment analysis that look at that particular data point to see, okay, if we had that worst year again, would we be able to capture enough rainwater? And the answer is yes.
Peggy, I'm told your mic is not picking you up. Can you just move that over?
I moved it, and I, okay, so let me ask a couple other questions you may or may not have an answer to. So one of the things was the odor mitigation, and that seemed to be a concern from the comments I read. But we now have a history, the county has a history of permitting grows and having odor containment, and has the mitigation measures that have been put in place on other grows been sufficient to mitigate odor so that we can, with some competence, say, you know, don't worry, it works?
So probably, there's one site that's in Fortuna, and we get a lot of complaints from the neighborhood there. And this last year, last year, we went out eight different times, and this year, we've already been out there a couple times to respond to complaints. There's a difficulty with that particular site, and that is that there's an adjacent site that has an approved conditional use permit for outdoor cultivation within a community planning area. That's the site that produces the odor. We've walked up and down the site that has the odor mitigation on it, and walked around it, and stood right next to the greenhouses and tried to smell it with three or four different people, and we've not been able to detect an odor outside the greenhouses.
That's good to know. There was just one other small question, and in the comments, they indicated that there was someone that wasn't permitted, I think, to build a residence nearby, or they joining parcel. Was there a reason for that that would have any bearing on this?
Do you know the answer to that? Because I couldn't answer. That is on the other parcel that was part of the former mill site that actually has a little bit more of a contamination problem, but we recently did actually approve a use permit for a mobile home to be placed there that is going to be on a septic system and utilizing a groundwater well, and that was actually approved just a few months ago.
Okay.
So I think perhaps when that comment was made, it had not been approved, but it has now.
They may not have known. Okay, well, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner West?
I heard a lot of concerns about what if they violate their permit in some way. Can you talk about some of the remedies that are available to the neighbors and the public and some of the ways that the county checks on permits once they're issued?
Sites are inspected annually, and if a nonconformity is discovered, then the operator, within 10 days, receives a description of the nonconformity and instructions on how to correct it. And then the community has the opportunity to contact us at any time about any concern, whether it be light, or odor, or traffic, or a condition of approval, and we investigate all of those. So there are a number of mechanisms in which to ensure compliance over time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mulder?
I think I should probably, I mean, ex parte, nothing too crazy, less than a handful of people talked to me about this. Concerns I heard was water and power was the same mix. I heard the staff report today, and it seems like it concurs with what I read, that the energy was already available by PG&E, and that no groundwater is being used, and that's what I heard in this presentation today, so that's it.
Thanks for that. I'll just ask one quick question. I'll just ask one quick question before we invite the applicant to make a presentation. I appreciated that you spoke to the noticing question, which was raised by a couple of the public comments. You explained in your presentation that the initial notice, the application notice in 2022, went out to a wider area 1,000 feet from the project, I think you said, but the subsequent notices related to the environmental documents and this public hearing, I guess, went out to a smaller radius. So you've already basically said that we followed what we're required to do, but I do think it's understandable to me that having received the earlier notice, if you were within that wider area, you might, one might presume that subsequent action on that application would send a notice again. So, I mean, can you speak to that at all? Is this an issue that we've confronted before? Is this perhaps something that we might consider adjusting our policy on so that the wider area receives the same notice that they, you know, as the other?
Yeah, I'll try to address that. I think if that is the direction from the planning commission, I think that's something that would be really easy for us to do. The idea behind the notice of application is to gauge community interest and see who's interested in the project, who has concerns, who has questions, who maybe wants to follow it and be notified in the future. And so certainly anybody who had provided comments in response to the notice of application, our intent was to also send them a notice of these other actions. Having not received any, well, I should correct that, we did receive one comment in response to the notice of application and they were included on the notice of public hearing. And so having not received any other comments, we felt that it was appropriate to send it to the smaller list. Sending it to a, excuse me, larger list is, does start to add a lot of cost for mailing. So that was a decision that we made and certainly we could start to expand if that's something that the planning commission would like to see in the future.
Well, I appreciate that explanation. Commissioner Mulder.
Through the chair, one other question about the piggybacking on the noticing and I want to be corrected if it's not the policy anymore. My understanding is if there's a project, say even 100 miles away from you, you can request to be on the notification list. Is that still correct or incorrect?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And piggybacking on that, if you were one of the neighbors that responded to the initial noticing of a wider area, you would then get subsequent notices automatically. Is that correct?
Correct. I don't know that it's automatic necessarily, but we as staff would make sure that they get that notice.
They would be added to the noticing list?
Yes.
Okay, well, thanks. Okay, if there's no other questions at this time for staff, then I will open the public hearing portion of this item, beginning with the applicant and their agent or agents. They've been informed that they have up to 15 minutes combined for a presentation and I believe they've timed their material to fit within that.
Good evening, Chair Levy and through the chair of the commission and staff. As always, I really appreciate your guys' service and commitment to our community. We have a presentation for you. We're actually going to log in through Zoom here and run it on the machine. So I believe that we'll be able to be led in here in one moment and we'll start our presentation. All right, so as you heard from staff, we're here for Humboldt Reserves Project this evening. Staff did a great job in communicating the scope of the project. I wanted to go through and just highlight some of the information in order to help clarify the project and we can kind of go from there. We will try to get our presentation done within the next 15 minutes and it will be available for questions at the end of that or at the end of the presentation or the public hearing here. So this project is an industrial site zoned MH along Highway 36. It is the old Carlotta Mill Site and being abreast of the county's procedures in moving through 1.0 and 2.0, MH and industrial sites were identified as a location to go for indoor cultivation and really through the 2.0, there is very little limitation to what can be put on an MH site. So this was purposely pointed, these types of projects, to these industrial sites. Next slide. To that point, this is a picture from 1998 showing the extent of the activity and development that once occurred on this property. Next slide. Wanted to reiterate the extent of studies that were conducted for the property. As you are aware, your staff is very diligent in making sure all the questions are answered and the information is clear and meets the fair agreement standard for CEQA. I wanted to address while we had that slide up, just to comment something about Caltrans and the access to the site and I wanted to touch in that there was a referral to Caltrans and the standard response was just get an encroachment permit. So wanted to touch in on that at this time. Next slide, please. This, again, you saw this excerpt from the application material before and you can see the location of the proposed three buildings. There's a small existing building that will have a small addition to it and the location of the rainwater collection pond. So I know that water is of interest to everybody on a type of project like this, so we wanted to touch in on what the real demand was for this project and the cultivation and nursery area has a demand of 4.2 million gallons annually for water use. And the 269,000 gallons is our estimate for toilets and hand wash and cleaning for domestic uses in the building, the buildings. The 1.2 million gallons listed there is just, we want to be clear that we accounted for evaporation out of the rain collection pond. And that evaporation calculation was based on the greatest surface area as if the pond was filled and it came from an average between a Ferndale and a Willow Creek average pan evaporation rate and the average rate was 35.18 inches that we use to calculate how much water would evaporate out of that pond in an annual year. Next slide, please. Just kind of going through that, the rain collection, I'll go into more detail about the years and the analysis for the hydrology cap, but 60% of the water is proposed, 60% of the irrigation water is proposed to come from rain collection and that is from the roof structures of all of the buildings and the catchment area of the rain catchment pond itself. The recapture, I know that we've heard of this, there's actually technical specification that requests thermostat, dehumidifiers, proof dies and there's a range of what type of recapture is available and we use the guidance from that document in order to calculate how much dehumidification and recapture we'll get from that. Next slide, please. So, you know, the discussion about rainwater and collection, we wanted to show here that given the roof surfaces and the pond collection surface, the project features are capable of collecting over 10 million gallons of water per year, which is in excess of what we're going to use. And in a drought year, which was identified as 2013, the lowest rainfall year on record over the last 100 years, we see that we can still collect more than 3.8 million gallons of water. The average, as was asked, we actually used the last 20 years to come up with the average rainfall and found the lowest rainfall year in the last 100 years. Next slide, please. Part of this is just a glimpse at the analysis and information included in your staff report. We broke down a couple more slides following this. Next slide, please. Just trying to give an example of the relativity, the graph on the left really shows the total amount of rain collection and dehumidification recapture that will occur in an average rain year. And you can see the short stack next to it, that's the actual project demand. So you can see that in an average year, there's well in excess of enough water to capture for this project. The limitation is that we size the rainwater catchment pond as needed, not to catch everything we could. The chart to the right, you can see that the scale has changed and that is in a drought year and it shows that there's clearly not as much available, but our calculations show that there'll be still more than 400,000 gallons of excess water available in a drought year. Next slide, please. Water supply for demand, just another way to look at it really clearly, our study shows that we could collect up to nearly 12 million gallons from the recapture in an average rain year. In a drought year, it shows that we're at 5.8 million and if we did the math really quick, that's the 400,000 gallons of excess that would be collected for supply for the project and would leave the 400,000 of excess. Hope that makes sense. Also, when we talk about the watershed, we believe that 9% of the rain that falls on this project site will be collected and be part of, in an average year, and be part of this operation. When we look at the watershed, that's actually 0.01% or 1/10,000th of the rain that falls in the watershed and we're really at the bottom of this watershed. So relatively, and we debated a little bit looking at it, but I believe that if we take that percentage for a drought year, we're looking at 3/10,000ths of the rainfall in that watershed being used for this project, even in a year like 2013. When it comes to water quality and runoff, just wanted to touch base that the project will be subject to more than one order from the State Water Quality Control Board regarding cannabis general order. So the operation itself will be regulated through the State Water Resource Control Board. There'll also be a construction general permit. The construction general permit will assure that during the construction and will include temporary BMPs and have permanent BMPs. So as the project matures, the grass swales will come in and filter strips will come in and we'll be making an improvement to the runoff of this existing site. Also wanted to touch in that with regards to the indoor operation, it is a closed loop and we have a reservoir, fertigation tanks inside of the building and it will be closed loop. You can kind of see it will pump from the reservoir to the plants and come back into the reservoir. When the water is absorbed by the plants and we run down to, the concentration of nutrients can come up in the remaining water and so samples will be taken, the right pH and nutrient will be established and water will be added along with nutrients to come back to the optimum nutrient and pH circumstance. So there should be no discharge from the actual operation. We consider maybe the operation would shut down for a bit of time and things would dry up. There could be some salts that collect in these beds and those salts can be scraped up and collected and disposed of at an appropriate solid waste facility. Next slide, please. Power, just giving you a little better sense of what we're talking about, you can see where the red box on the top right of that image, it is indicating where the actual substation is and the yellow line indicates the easement and conduits that are on the poles coming to the site. The assessment indicated that PG&E is already serving this, so PG&E already comes into the substation and the only improvements that will be required will come with the building permit process onsite and that will be followed through California Electrical Code and so forth. The applicant, our team and the applicant confirmed with RCEA that the renewable power can be purchased through the substation and is conditioned for the project to do that. I think that's, and again, on grid, just wanted to make that visual a little bit clearer as you guys heard the story. Though I was going to add, if I didn't say that there is a 20-year lease and the applicant is the exclusive lease holder, there are no other users of that system. We also looked at, just sharing a little bit of aesthetics, the building conceptual design is the idea of the building that the applicant has visioned and we took buildings of that shape and size and we plotted them into Google Images for, I think it's Google Images, from the drive-by on Highway 36 eastbound and westbound and you can get a little perspective. You see the buildings in the background and you can see the roofs and sides of that. So we wanted to share a little bit about what that would look like from the roadway. Next slide, please. I know odor control was mentioned. The project comes with two elements of odor control. One is going to be internal carbon filters that will scrub the air within the building, helping minimize the issues. We talked about buildings need to burp and sometimes there's air exchanges needed and maybe there'll be venting opened up and so the building will also be equipped with a vapor phase odor control system. Maybe you guys have heard of the Biorscientific System. Basically, they have a, you know, it's a non-toxic, no impact to the environment odor system that neutralizes smell in the air. And I believe that this system has been implemented and conditioned in other areas of the county and Biorscientific has been run through the grill in Santa Barbara County regarding carpentery and other odor issues. So we feel it's a very well-vetted system and we designed that into this project. Next, please. Just touching in again that we had complete botanical and biological assessment. We studied for wetlands and made sure that we did everything seasonally and have reports with no significant impact with, and we are following the mitigation measures listed in there, which are touched on by the staff here, pre-construction surveys to assure that there's no nesting birds or amphibians within the project site. Next slide, please. Kind of project review, I just kind of want to summarize that this applicant focused on the guidance of the county's 2.0, found an industrial site that was dilapidated and not in function, found it where it had access to power, has a project designed for rain collection, renewable power, a clean site, quiet, dark and clean with all the conditions and feel that the applicant listened and watched the community and their needs through time and has brought forward to you a project that hits the general requirements and standard that I've been hearing throughout the community and I'm sure you guys hear of all the time. Next slide, please. Wanted to touch in that current, today, someone could come forward with a project, I have a list of, from the zoning ordinance on MH zone, principally permitted activities and someone could come forward with a principally permitted activity and construct all of these buildings and infrastructure without having to be renewable energy, without having to be rain collection and without having to be so conscientious of the site. That's a possibility on the site. The site also, so we are repurposing an old industrial site, which is another guidance that the county ordinance came up with. The proposed project site will not preclude future uses. These buildings will be designated as an F1 occupancy in the California Building Code. May not mean a lot, but basically there's a very long list of industrial manufacturing activities that could occur in that building. So I just wanted to touch on that should the cannabis project one day come to an end, the infrastructure will be left and can be repurposed for many, many things in the future. Next slide. With that, the applicant, Jack here, would like to say a few words for a moment, so just need a few more minutes.
Sure, thank you so much. All right. Good evening. I'm Jack Wheeler. I'm the property owner and applicant. I've been a full-time resident of Humboldt County for over eight years, currently live less than four miles from the project site. I got my start in Humboldt County on a small family farm near Fortuna where I lived and worked alongside my mom and two brothers. In 2017, I purchased and moved to a small ranch on North Fisher Road. I fell in love with the house and property and envisioned it as a place where I could start my own legal business and raise a family. I applied for a cannabis permit and spent over two years working through the Argeus 2.0 permitting process. I was met with fierce opposition from the surrounding neighbors, most of whom are the same individuals opposing this project today. same individuals opposing this project today. Though I made concessions in order to come to a resolution, I found them completely unwilling to compromise. I respectfully bowed out and tipped my hat. I could no longer afford to pay my mortgage and was forced to sell my home and scrap my dreams. At the time, it was a personal loss of epic proportions and potentially the end of my story in Humboldt County. I loved this place and couldn't accept that, so I picked myself up and started again from scratch. I followed the direction of the county to redevelop a vacant industrial site. I followed the advice of Allison Jackson of Harlan Law Firm, LLP, who is now spearheading the last-minute opposition to my project to move the industrial, to move the project to an industrial site on Highway 36, per her opposition letter in the public record dated November 24, 2020. I quote, "This expansive project should be located in a more commercial slash industrial area along Highway 36," end quote. I studied the public comments and listened very carefully to the concerns of the surrounding community, which I have incorporated into this new project from the ground up. I have made every effort in good faith to include mitigating measures that would lessen the impact to my neighbors beyond what is required by the cannabis ordinance. If the commission feels that I have fallen short in this effort, I would greatly appreciate the opportunity to address it. In the past eight years of working with the planning and building department and cannabis staff, I built a reputation as someone who follows the rules, does things by the book, and acts in good faith. I'm well-prepared to execute on this project and make a massive investment in Humboldt County. I have met many great people in the cannabis industry.
Stop. Did you just turn off this mic?
Oh. Sorry, I thought I was turning off the mic down below, which is not in use, but I, oh, did I, huh, okay, sorry. I apologize. It's okay. That's all right. I have met many great people in the cannabis industry, many of whom I now call friends, who have a deep passion for cannabis, years of experience, and now have nowhere to apply their skills. I look forward to putting them back to work and providing for them and their families. I'm all in and ask for you to please approve my project tonight. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you so much, Mr. Wheeler, Mr. White.
I had just one more comment following that, that in the noticing area discussion, a lot of the comments that came in opposition to the issue to the project are actually on North Fisher Road, not South Fisher Road, and the folks that are making those comments were not actually in that zone that would be affected, is my understanding on that. Just a point of clarification, we are here to answer any questions, and if there is, we would like an opportunity to rebuttal after public comment, and if you have any questions, we'll be sitting right here. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. White. You'll certainly have that opportunity to respond to any public comments or concerns. Before we go to other public comment, are there questions from the commission for Mr. White or Mr. Wheeler? Okay, seeing none at this time, then I will, thank you. I will open it up to public comment more generally, beginning with those in the audience in the room. If you wish to comment, if you could please come to the podium or stand over there, yes. Go ahead, ma'am, you can go first. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Suzanne. I work in the compliance industry, and the only reason I'm here is because I lost power in Riodell and had to come home and thought, I'm going to stop by because I saw this in the calendar. I guess my only question is this, it says that it's recommended to be adopted under the resolution for the negative mitigation declaration. Does that mean a CEQA hasn't been done for this project? And I know you can't answer questions.
Yeah, no, if you have questions, staff will make a note of it, and they'll most likely respond at the end.
I think that's a very important one. We do a lot of compliance permitting outside of Humboldt County, and a project this size would usually fall under that. I haven't read up on this, I haven't followed it, it's kind of chance that I'm even here, but that's something I think should be called attention to. We're in the trenches for the little guys about their generators, and this one seems like a big enough project that it should be looked at in terms of impact. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Are there other members of the audience wishing to comment in person? Please go ahead and raise your hand or come up. Thank you.
I'm Carol Cox. John Ford, I think, knows me. Jack Wheeler knows us. We live on the north end of Fisher Road, as Mr. Wheeler was saying. It's a long valley, and some of the pictures are a little bit deceiving on where the Hydesville Water Wells are, which is like right outside the picture there. It's a long valley. We can hear the sound if the mill is running, like when it was running. My major concern is that this is a community plan area. We, the community, is my understanding, should have some say in it. What's also outside the maps and the pictures is the Mennonite school, the Mennonite community, the farming community. So you've got the well or the water as an issue, and we have no idea how to predict water in the future. We don't know what a drought year is, we don't know about climate change. So the water is number one. Community plan, I think, is super important. The plan looks fabulous. So did the plan that they tried to put in earlier. Jack Wheeler and Lots Coast Organics, and I think it's now repurposed as this reserve. Because a plan looks fabulous doesn't mean that it is appropriate for the community. Yes, I've had conversations with the supervisors, they do want people to come out of the hills and stop growing marijuana locally and come down to websites like this one, but not this massive proposed site that looks beautiful. I mean, the plan looks just fabulous. We don't know about the water. The community, I was not notified because we're not in 1,000 feet, or, but we are affected by it. We can now smell, and I don't know if John Ford knows about this, but we can now smell the marijuana coming from up off of Cooper, right above us, which is, I think, I'm not sure if it's the Hill property, and the one that's on Barber Creek. At what point do we say that there's so much marijuana growing in this county? Yes, I'm looking at that, too. Anyway, water, community, we can smell it, we can see it, we can hear it, we're in a valley. And yes, that was the we are grounds there, too, so I don't know about that. And yes, we have amphibians and lots of birds and things like that, too. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your comment. Are there other people in the room wishing to make comment?
Yes, please.
Okay, come on up.
My name's Lamet, and my concerns basically amounted to the water. I am a farmer, I have livestock. I understand the rain catchment system, but what I want is a guarantee. I want to know that I'm going to have enough water for my vegetable garden, for my livestock, for my chickens, and for me to wash my clothes and flush my toilets. Just because this plan looks beautiful on paper doesn't mean they're not going to pull a sneaky later. And who's going to stop this? Who's going to police this? The school is a major situation, and I don't think this size of a, this massive of a grove should be that close to that Mennonite school. The other thing that really bothers me is the notification system. This is in a community planned area. The people within the community planned area should have been notified. That I find very inappropriate and very wrong. I thank you for your time, have a good day.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else in the room, in person, wishing to make comment? Okay, I see one, one more person. Go ahead, sir, you have three minutes.
Three minutes. Greetings, my name is Jerry Cox, and I live on Fisher Road in Hydesville. My, as the previous comments have stated, it's a very well-thought-out plan, covered all the particulars, very fine presentation. But one of the things that you brought up was asking about the notification. So yes, we're in a community plan area. In fact, I happened to sit on the advisory committee back in the mid-'80s that provided input to the planning department that eventually Anna Sparks, as chairperson of the board of supervisors at that time, approved and became part of the county's general plan. So I know all about that. The reason I got on to that committee was because of my concern of the water in the valley. But this whole notification thing, I mean, with a project this enormous to rely on, and I know it's standard procedure, 1,000 feet, and then the later notices, 300 feet, but if you look at the lion's share of the most recent comments in the public record concerning this project, they've only come in since the weekend, because it was only then that somebody spotted it on your agenda. And it just seems that you're denying the greater Hydesville commute, Carlotta-Hydesville community, an opportunity to hear this presentation, ask the questions, and wrap, because it's hard to wrap around, wrap your head around, the amount of water that we'll use, and you're relying on Mother Nature. And is that done at the expense of the water table? And the topography, I'm at the north end of the valley, this is at the south end of the valley, on the other side of Highway 36. And so for them to capture that amount of water and have the pond, is that at the expense of the groundwater table, of the flow into Yager Creek, the Vanduzen? You know, that's really important. I implore you to postpone or table this until Mr. Ford and the applicant can arrange a public hearing with proper notice so that the people can come together and hear for themselves about this massive project in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service on that committee. Any other members of the audience in person wishing to comment? Seeing none, I will close the in-person public comment and go to Zoom and phone. I see two hands raised so far. The first is public 5288. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hello, Ken Solowski. I want to put a little plug in first. If any of you have a chance, Google the Humboldt Consequential, and you'll be educated rather rapidly of things that are happening before you tonight. The Humboldt Consequential, you'll find it interesting and entertaining. So the problem we have here is quite obvious to me, and John Ford is a stick with for notification, is you set precedence for notifying certain people regarding this project. And then once you set precedence, you fail to do follow-up and notify the same people again. So that is a fatal flaw. I highly recommend that you go back on this particular project and re-notify it and bring it forward at a future meeting. And I doubt whether any of these people have the money to litigate or whatever based upon it, but that's quite clear to me on a legal staff, not being a lawyer, that something's gone awry here. I, this is a project, in my opinion, was to dream for at one time. It no longer is. The building itself is butt-ugly, I mean, you look, that's something down in South LA or something like that, a commercial thing. To the applicant, here's a suggestion, if you want to really do something and brand your product and make some money, grow in the sun, single crop, the location is fantastic. I mean, I've always said, you know, 99% of your growers don't belong where you permitted them, they should be here. One concern I have is the amount of money that, not money, but grid capacity that's been budgeted this project, there was nothing available for so long at all. I mean, everybody's shut down, you weren't supposed to be able to do a house, you were supposed to do anything. But for some reason, PG&E set aside this amount of energy for some mill site, and I've been tracking this mill site forever, just because of what it is. Probably on a village site, most of these were, and I'm quite confident this one isn't, you have dealt with the thing as far as, you know, discovery and all that stuff. But I highly recommend that you re-notify this and bring it back and take your consideration that time. And I really appreciate Rod, you know, and his acknowledgement of, you know, Bonnie Blackberry and Robie and their participation in changing things, but this particular project irritates me because it has such a high energy usage. And that's something that maybe the applicant wants to fix his karma and think about Mother Nature and grow in the sun and do a single crop and do it right and brand it and make money, but that doesn't seem to be where the market is, and I understand that. So thank you, Ma'am, for your time, and I hope you do the right thing here and have this properly noticed and bring this back next meeting. Thank you, Ma'am, for your time.
Thank you, sir. The next hand raised is Jeff Wheeler, Viva Medtech. You are recognized, go ahead, you have three minutes. Jeff Wheeler? It's still muted. Did you, I saw your hand go down. If that means you did not actually wish to speak, that's fine. If you do wish to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. I have one other hand up. We can come back to you if you raise your hand again. I'll move on to the last hand I see, which is public 7108. Go ahead, you have three minutes. 7108, I believe that's Bonnie or Robie? I'm not hearing anything yet. Now it's unmuted.
Okay.
Yes, we hear you now.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay, thank you. The biggest thing about this is the size. This is very large, and the impact, I really am concerned about the lack of notification for the community that lives around there and will be impacted. And I'm not sure people that have put in comments before have always gotten noticed. There was something out, Honeydew Petroleum, where a bunch of people had commented, but when it came back up, they were not notified. So the notification issue is a really big deal. And also, as far as rainfall in a normal year, normal sky, there is climate change drought, we don't know what the future is. Any kind of estimation should be based on what happened this year and last year, rather than averaging it out over a bunch of years. And there's hoping about high-energy use and all the traffic going back and forth. I mean, there'll be some workers at some point, that's a lot of traffic, and I don't know if there's any mitigation for trying to keep our carbon output down. So I guess those are my, oh, and as far as relying on inspection last year, when people get a couple weeks' notice or whatever, the chance to really find humanity is pretty low. I think when substantial things are found, it's when fish and wildlife shows up with the water and without one. So that's my comment, thank you for listening. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. Okay. Last chance, is there anyone else on Zoom or on the phone wishing to comment on this Seeing no other hands, I will close the general public comment, but I will invite Mr. White or Mr. Wheeler, if you wish, to come back up to respond to the public comments that
Thank you very much, Chair.
Sure. Actually, you can have up to five minutes if necessary.
Okay. No, I think that a lot of what we heard were items that have already been adjusted. Sometimes, you know, we're really dealing with that subject matter, that this is targeted towards an industrial site next to the highway, down on the flat ground, away from the hills, and focuses on rain collection. I heard comments about concerns. This is down in the lower portion of the watershed, and therefore should not be affecting anybody's access to water upstream of this location. And really, we're here to answer any further questions, but I really feel the project and presentation already answered most of those questions. So thank you very much. Be here.
Yeah. Well, why don't you stay there? We have a couple of questions for you. Commissioner Mulder.
Through the chair, in your presentation, I believe I heard that you will only be utilizing 9% of the parcel to capture rain-water catchment. Did I hear that original presentation correctly or incorrectly?
Correctly.
Okay. So that means that the other 91% of rainfall in that parcel still can make it to the aquifer or anywhere else, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have one quick follow-up on water. I believe you said in your presentation that in addition to all irrigation water only using the rainfall, the rain-water catchment, that that will also be the source of employee drinking water and personal use, other water used for non-irrigation will similarly be from rain-water catchment.
Correct.
So there's no...
And/or, you know, recapture from the dehumidification.
Recapture. Got it. Just to be clear, because there was this question raised, the state water board sent a letter suggesting you might ask for a hookup to the Hydesville Community Water District. You have no intention of doing that?
That is not the intention. We're not really close to that. But we do, and there is a condition in the project identifying that as the project reaches a certain amount of employees on site, we need to make sure that there is a state-approved small drinking water system, and we'll have to deal with getting that permit as the project gets to that size.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant's agent at this time? Commissioner Mulder.
Through the chair, you may not, I don't know, this is kind of a question that's coming up. The previous, how would I put this? It's in regards to water. In your research of the past history of this parcel, did you ever come across any logs that showed how much water was used when this was operating mill site? If the answer is no, the answer is no, it's fine. It's just...
I don't have any historic data on this site.
Thank you.
Okay. Actually, if nobody else has a question, I have one more. Just to be as thorough as possible in vetting any possible concerns, the phase-two assessment did show trace amounts of dioxin at one or two locations when they did soil samples, correct?
I believe that is incorrect. I believe that there was a phase-one and two, and they were through the previous ownership, City of Scotia, I believe, in that there was another phase-one done that went out and did an assessment and found nothing, but maybe Leah's got it.
That's right, sorry. You're right, there were trace amounts of dioxin found on site from a previous conical burner, and they were approximately, I had it here, sorry, I rushed up so fast, I got excited, approximately, oh, okay, they were...
I have it, Leah.
Okay, great, thank you.
So there were two samples that came back, one reading 0.026, the other one reading Screening level thresholds for commercial industrial uses range between 220 to 770. So those were very small trace amounts that are basically considered background levels that are not unexpected for a location that had a conical burner.
Right.
Not even close to a recognized environmental condition.
Yeah, about a thousandth or less of what the level would be of a concern that would require remediation. So, okay, I just wanted to acknowledge that because it's mentioned in the staff report, but it, given the site's history, that actually seems like a very, very good finding and not a concern. So thanks.
Well, I'm glad you got the real answer there.
Yeah. Sure. Well, thanks you for the, again, for your, oh, is there one more? I guess we're, yeah, thank you, Raj.
So I'm not familiar with what a community plan area is and how that might impact a project like this, so I was wondering if staff could explain that to me?
And just for the record, I just want to acknowledge that we've closed public comment now, and we're bringing it back to the commission and staff for discussion.
Community planning areas are specifically named and mapped communities throughout the county. Carlotta-Hydesville is one of them. The way those are incorporated into the commercial cannabis ordinance is especially requiring the notice of application. So if we have projects that are outside community planning areas, they're not subject to that notice requirement. So the citizens of the community planning area got enhanced notice that other people outside of community planning areas don't receive. Another thing that the community planning area provisions provide for in the cannabis ordinance is making sure there is a public hearing. And most projects that might be approved administratively elsewhere in the county in a community planning area would require a conditional use permit and were required to come before this body as a public hearing so people can provide their input.
So the county has complied with all the requirements of the community plan area regard to this project?
That is correct. And so just to kind of build on your question and some of the comments received during public comment, and concerns about whether the projects were properly noticed or there being a lack of notification, the noticing requirements were followed for the community planning areas as well as the general noticing requirements for all other projects.
Commissioner Mulder.
And to piggyback through the chair about noticing, if this meeting was improperly noticed, we would not be having this hearing right now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And since I got my mic on, if I may, I'd like to just address a handful of the other public comments that haven't been discussed so far. One of the commenters asked whether there was a sequel process. Absolutely, there was a sequel process. There was an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, and that's one of the documents that the planning commission is being recommended to adopt here tonight. And that was circulated accordingly.
That was circulated, I mean, maybe you can just speak to, maybe the intention or the question was, why was there not an EIR required? Sequel was followed, but it didn't rise to the level of a full EIR?
That is because the applicant was able to identify possible mitigations to bring the project impact to a less-than-significant impact.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, there's just one other comment. A lot of, as Raj mentioned, a lot of the concerns about odor and other things, you know, were already addressed. But when it comes to the water, a question was posed by a commenter, what if they pull a sneaky, one of the conditions of approval, condition A1, also prohibits any interconnectivity between the irrigation system and any other source of water. So if a site inspection or some other information came to the county's attention demonstrating interconnectivity, that would be a violation of their permit. And the, and I mentioned this before, water meters are required and monthly water logs are required to be kept and available for inspection. So it would be very difficult to cheat.
Oh, yes, Commissioner West.
Talking about noticing, is there ever, is it common practice to put a sign on the property letting community members who might drive by know that the property is subject to a public hearing?
There aren't any current county policies requiring the sign that I know of, for a project of this type.
Commissioner Mulder.
Just wanted to piggyback to condition A1 at the very beginning of it too, because we did hear concerns about water. I'm just going to read it. Prior to initiating operation, the permitting must demonstrate that adequate rain-water has been stored to support the operation. So the way I'm reading that is no plants will be allowed on site until sufficient water is there. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Commissioner West.
One more question. First off, I think it's more generally, I piggybacking on what you said earlier, like thinking about noticing as a practice, I don't know if that discussion is properly had during this public hearing about this particular applicant, but it is something I also would love to explore more.
Yeah, I mean, I'm satisfied that the legal requirements were met. But as a matter of policy, you know, the fact that this lies within a community plan area and a wider area of residents or neighbors was noticed about the application, I just, you know, and this is large. I mean, I don't know exactly what makes something meet that threshold. It's not really a technical definition, but I wonder if there are additional ways that we might go above and beyond what is required for noticing of certain types of projects? It's just a question. Commissioner Mulder, you want to go on about that?
Definition of large is always bigger than what I have.
Right.
Isn't that what I've heard? So I hear the policy concerns and the noticing concerns, but I also heard that there's a monetary decision behind that as well. And being as we are not the decision-makers in monetary spending of the county, I would feel uncomfortable and less directed by the board of supervisors to really dive into those waters. That's just my feeling with where we are economically within the county.
Fair enough. That wasn't really a question, but if you wish to respond to it with any third thoughts you're...
There was one other issue that was brought up that I want to make sure gets responded to. There was public comment that this project is located near a Mennonite school. And so during the deliberations, I attempted to locate this school using some internet searches, and I did find one on McDermott Street in Alton, but that school is three miles from the project site, and the standards are for it to be at least 600 feet. So I was, I just, you know, wanted to share the research that I did on the fly after that comment.
I see some shaking heads, and it looks like Cliff is going to go see if there's additional information.
I believe the Mennonite school is towards Hydesville, at the top of the hill, just at the top of the passing lane on the left-hand side, there's a, I believe, a church and a school there.
At the location of the church? Okay.
Yeah, probably half-mile away.
And through the chair, I just want to clarify, that's what I heard as well, that it's in that location, just west of Fisher Road.
Commissioner West.
Did I hear correctly that Senior Planner Santos said that the requirement would be 600 feet from a school?
Yes, but under 2.0, that setback can be reduced.
See, if I could, it's well over 1,500 feet.
To that, to the church school? Yes, got it. Well, then I guess we'll bring it back to the commission for further deliberation. What are folks thinking?
So, you know, we hear a lot of complaints about a lot of things, and this project seems like they've already, you know, worked to overcome those issues. You know, they're not using groundwater, they're not, they don't have a well, they don't have, you know, they're using 100% capture, they've got more modern technology, which I'd be curious to see how this all works out. But one of the things that I did hear was that this was going to be built over several years. It's not like they're going out there from day one and building the whole thing. And I think economics will drive how far they, you know, can go, because that was another issue, like how can they afford to do this, and everyone else is asking for tax relief? If it doesn't work, they're not going to be able to build everything they want, but it would be really nice to see how what they do build works, because I don't know if anyone else is using this extent of technology, but it's curious to me to see how successful they are. And maybe they won't end up building the whole site, because maybe they'll find out after the first building that that's where they need to stop, because they can't afford to continue, because it's going to be expensive to do what they're going to do. The only issue I had was, you know, we're going to use PG&E power, you know, that's good, because we always bring that up too, generators, and this one's not relying on generators unless there's an energy failure. You know, that it would be nice if they built renewables into their site, but that's economics also. I think that you're going to find that that's probably more of a financial incentive to put those in, get tax credits, and have less reliance on, you know, PG&E bill that's going to be sky-high. So I'm not opposed to this project, and a lot of times I am, because I think they have kind of overcome all the things that we always complain about.
Yeah.
But I don't see that. I mean, they're not in the hills, they're on a commercial site that looks like an eyesore to me, and I get that people get used to not seeing something in their neighborhood and they don't want it there, but, you know, it also does create jobs in the community, and I think that that's a positive too. But maybe it won't be as big as we all think it's going to end up being.
Was that Commissioner O'Neill making a motion? That's what I kind of almost heard.
I would welcome Commissioner O'Neill to make such a motion, but I'll just echo what she said. I really do think this project has very effectively anticipated and met the concerns that would typically be raised, starting with the site itself being an abandoned, dilapidated, you know, mill site that's now going to be rehabilitated for this and future uses. And on the PowerPoint, I believe it's, my understanding, that it's not just that you're using PG&E, but it's conditioned to use renewable PG&E. Is that correct? Yes. So, I mean, that's, that's as good as we could hope for, I think, in terms of power supply, so. Commissioner Landrieu.
So I just want to clarify that there was a mention to Jaeger Creek and Vanduzen River. It seems like this is pretty far away from some of those in the event there was some kind of accident or whatever. Could you clarify my suspicion that it is far away?
The development, the proposed development will be outside all of the streamside management areas associated with nearby surface waters. And so an adequate buffer from the creek is maintained from all development. And then, under some of the state regulations, the operator is required to implement and maintain certain best practices to make sure that if there is any kind of accident, that there isn't flow into those surface waters.
If I could, just through the chair, specifically Jaeger Creek is actually on the east side of the Carlotta, former Carlotta Mill Site, and they're the primary, I'm trying to measure right now, but there's 2,000 feet, sorry, 1,000 feet from the project site. There's, the other half of the Carlotta Mill Site is in between this site and Jaeger Creek. That's a separate property.
Yes, Commissioner Gabdol.
And just to correct the rec, I think the pronunciation is Yager Creek.
Yes.
Listen, I think the community and the public did a really good job expressing their concerns, and I want to acknowledge that about water traffic, odor, power, and notification. However, I also think that staff, the agent and the applicant, have done a really good job in presenting this project and their solutions and their strategies to address those concerns, which I think are well documented in the environmental document as well as in the op- which I think are well documented in the environmental document as well, as in the operation plan and the presentation. I really appreciate that the owner himself stood up and spoke about the project and his commitment to the project. I have sensed that he'll be a good neighbor. So I do think that it's great to see reuse of an abandoned industrial site and property. And, you know, this is the type of site that, you know, these projects are intended to use. So I'm ready to support the project as well.
Well, then, anyone want to make a motion?
Just wanted to add.
Oh yes, go ahead. Commissioner Mulder?
So one thing that I did hear by lots of people is scale of size and stuff like that. And one thing I've learned being up here is regardless of what my personal opinion is about size or scale or any of that kind of stuff, I have to put that to the side and really just look at a project and does it meet the requirements of the ordinance and those kind of things? And is it mitigating the impacts? And I read through this and I was like, wow. They're really, really doing their due diligence and trying to mitigate all the impacts. So honestly, with that, I would make a motion to adopt the Resolution 231104, Attachment 1, which does the following, "Adopt the mitigating negative declaration prepared for Humboldt Reserve LLC project pursuant to Section 1074 State Secret Guidelines, and find that the proposed project complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance, and approves the conditional use permit, subject to the recommended conditions of approval, Exhibit A, and adopts the mitigation monitoring report in Attachment 1B." And also thank staff for really doing their work on this as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Mulder. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Mulder, seconded by Commissioner West. Any discussion on the motion before we call for a vote? Okay, then I think we can have a voice vote on this motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstain? Chair votes aye. Motion passes unanimously. And thanks staff for that report and for the great presentation from the agent and owner. Thank you. And thank you, public as well. We really do appreciate your thorough airing of the issues this raises. Okay. We have time to, we have no items pulled from consent. We just now have time for a report from Director Ford, if you have anything to report.
A question, I believe it's SP 68, that requires that local jurisdictions comply with their regional housing needs allocation, or, and if they don't, that there are certain things that start to happen, like housing has to be allowed with a ministerial permit by right, and you can't apply discretionary standards. So we're struggling, meeting our arena obligations, in all honesty. We particularly struggle at the low and very low income levels, because those are typically subsidized. We typically do much better at the median and above median income, because that seems to be what people can afford to buy. The impact of that on the county is not as severe, because most of our multifamily residential zones allow multifamily residential development by right as it is. So they're not discretionary. The exception to that would be in the coastal zone, and I don't think, well, I'm sure, that even a state statute requiring ministerial development would not supersede the requirements of the coastal zone. So we are working diligently to develop funding, to encourage development of housing. One of the things that we're exploring right now, particularly related to infill areas, is to look and see where there are utility deficiencies that currently make it more expensive to develop housing, and because of the cost of off-site improvements. And so that's something that we're currently working with, at least one of the CSDs to identify, and then to try to develop a plan to address that, so that at least the cost of offsites aren't added to the cost that a homeowner or a renter would have to pay to afford that housing. I think that's the update I have on that. Happy to answer questions, happy to discuss that more. But Humboldt is in an interesting place when it comes to trying to develop housing. And it's not, there are not easy solutions.
So it's, I don't know, I've just read a little bit about this, and that's why I had asked you to discuss it, because if, and I've seen some local communities that are fighting low-income housing. They think it, you know, low-income housing means people are crawling out of the bushes to live in these homes, and maybe they are, but, you know, low-income family of four could be $50,000 a year, you know. It's, those are your schoolteachers and, you know, a lot of your county workers are low-income.
Most of the people that work in the planning and building department.
And so, you know, some people are kind of overreacting when they hear low income, but we need more family low-income housing available, even whether it's rental or buying at ownership. And I know Arcade has done a lot of the low income, because they have the student population. Tribes are working on it. I don't know if they get factored into your quota or not. But in the rural areas, that infrastructure drives that cost up. Before you even build one house, you know, you're into that project $3 million just to bring in PG&E and roads and any kind of water system improvements that you need. It could be even more than $3 million. And to build a low-income house with subsidized federal funding, it's $400,000 for a three-bedroom plus, 400 plus for a three-bedroom house. You know, so building low-income housing is not low-income, you know, without subsidies, it's very, very difficult. But there are different resources that can be pulled together, you know, to try to make that happen. But if you don't, or if you fight it, like I saw, I'm not going to mention which town it is, but they, you know, have been fighting having low-income housing, isn't it true that the state can come in and sue you, and they can also take over your permitting process?
Yeah, they can, they can force you to approve things and allow things to occur. I'm not sure they can take over, but if you're not allowing it, like if you won't process the building permit, I'm sure they can. We're not suffering from that. If somebody would come in with a proposal to build low-income housing, I think we would, in fact, I've talked to the development community, if you come in with a housing development, we'll put a priority on it. It goes to the top of the list. That's how great our need is.
Yeah, thank you. Other questions about that or comments? Commissioner West?
I would just say we saw that at our last meeting when we approved a fairly sizable housing development, and that looked like it came through fairly quickly, and appreciated that.
Commissioner Mulder?
So I've heard the term crisis used a few times when it comes to housing. Have we officially deemed a crisis, or are we just trying to encourage developers to develop at this point in time?
Well, the lack of housing is affecting several of the different industries. Probably the most vocal is the medical industry, who are having trouble retaining doctors, nurses, professional-level staff, because they are having trouble finding a place to live. I can tell you personally, I was seeing my provider, and she was a traveler. And she said, yep, I'm leaving, I'm going back down to the Bay Area, because I can't, I can't find a permanent place to live. And so that becomes a very serious concern when, you know, the medical industry can't support itself, because it can't find housing. And then you look at the other economic generators within the community in terms of developing a workforce. How do you develop a workforce if you can't house them? One of the things that the last census showed is that in Humboldt County, our smallest demographic is between 25 and 40, which is typically our working folks, the age group. And they can't find a place to live, so they're finding jobs and housing elsewhere. And so the word crisis is used, it's not been declared officially by the Board of Supervisors, but I would say that it is at the point where our eyes need to be open about how dire our circumstances is when we can't keep medical professionals, we can't attract new businesses, and those are our very difficult circumstances.
Thank you. So what I heard, and I appreciate that, protecting the health of our community in the medical field, so it's making it, the housing shortage is making it challenging to protect our health of our community. And I can agree with you, it is challenging for those younger, 25 to 40 range to find that housing. Some of them are getting subsidized luckily and able to stay around here, but a lot of them are moving away.
I appreciate you bringing this up, and thanks, Commissioner O'Neill. Oh yeah, did you have a?
One of the things I had noticed when it started changing for me, we ride on a commute, or I did ride on a commute to work, and with young college graduates who are just starting their career, and they noticed they all lived in a room in a house. And I thought that was weird. You've got a job, a professional job, you graduated from college, and all you can get is a room in somebody else's house. And so you have all these unrelated people living in one home, and they're paying at least 500 plus for that one room. You know, I mean, it was shocking to me. And that's when I started realizing that even if they wanted a home, they couldn't either one, afford it, because the rents have gone up that high here, or if you're a single parent with three children, you know, you're trying to cram into maybe a two-bedroom, and it's going to cost you 1,200 to 1,500 a month, and you may not make more than a couple thousand. So there's nothing left for a car or food or any of the other things that you need in your life. And so we need to really not just close our mind to thinking that, you know, homeless housing or low-income housing is just, you know, for people that don't want to work. There's a lot of people that are working that can't get housing, and either they have to leave the area. And I've heard that about, they need at least 50 homes for the medical, to attract medical, they need 300 homes to track for the wind, you know. So, and then Humboldt, or Cal Poly now, I don't even know, you know, they're renting motels to put students in, because they don't have enough housing. So it's really serious. And everyone should probably, maybe they are, but get together and try to figure some of these solutions out. Like you said, identify certain parcels. You know, we have some developers that are really good at the low-income housing, but what do we need? I think we need family housing, you know.
Yeah, thank you. If I could just concur with what you're saying, is that, you know, I don't want to limit it to the discussion on low or very low-income housing. While that is important, we do need housing at all levels.
Yeah, and as you noted, in addition to there already being something that is close to a crisis, the expansion of Cal Poly is going to exert real pressure on, I mean, it's certainly not confined to Arcade. You know, that's a large number of new people there, trying to bring in students and faculty and staff. So I appreciate that you recognize, that the department recognizes that this is a really urgent concern, and that you're looking for new and creative ways to address it.
If I may, Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Landry?
Yes, concerning the students at Cal Poly Humboldt, absolutely, this is impacting our ability to grow our recruitment efforts and things. Folks are running into that issue of housing, and I think you all know that, but I just wanted to state it. Absolutely.
Commissioner Mulder?
This reminds me of that planning commissioner get-together that was over there by the waterfront. Everyone, that presentation, everyone, we need housing. And then there's that presentation where there's like four different beliefs, and I don't know if it would be appropriate to maybe at one point in time have that bigger conversation that they were kind of piggybacking on, because everyone, when you think housing, like, some people think, you know, apartment complexes, some people think single-family residences, some people think duplexes, and kind of, we need them all. I mean, so.
Thanks for mentioning that. I think that was, that was a great presentation by Rob. Yes, Rob Holmland, I think, made that presentation. Now with Greenway, right, or no?
Maybe not Rob Holmland.
No, no, now with Eureka.
He is with the Humble Bay Harbor District.
Oh, but I think it was Rob Holmland that I'm remembering gave that presentation. Anyway, it was really illuminating.
He used to be the Community Development Director at the City of Eureka.
Yeah, and this was a couple of years ago, so that's probably what it was. Yeah.
It was a company that was trying to do housing near the waterfront above businesses in Crescent City area. They were, that was part of the main thing of interesting ways to provide housing.
Yeah, no, no, no.
He also did consultant work for us, so it's not to be wrong.
Yeah, I maybe, and I maybe think of something different anyway, but in any case, yeah. Thank you. And while we are still, I apologize that we didn't take a break and, you know. But I figured we didn't, we were just about to wrap up, but while we have this item, report from Planner, I just also wanted to highlight, we were talking a little bit before the meeting started, since short-term rentals has been on our agenda the last couple of meetings, and we know that that will be coming before us in a couple months. I believe that there are now two more public meetings scheduled on that topic. Do you want to just let us know about that?
Sure. We are, we have scheduled basically the next two Wednesdays. There will be a meeting on the ninth down in Southern Humboldt in Garberville. And then there will be a meeting on the 16th, and that's going to be at the Ag Center in Eureka. And we're looking, we've put out a new draft of the ordinance that was put out yesterday, probably after ours, but it was promised yesterday, and so it got uploaded yesterday. It was a bit of a bit of work. So we were hopeful that it's addressed a lot of the comments that have been made, and is striking a balance between allowing short-term rentals, but also protecting neighborhood character and protecting housing stock. And that's one of the issues with this really is that very ripe discussion is part of our need to have housing is to protect housing. And if it converts to other uses, such as a commercial transient occupancy, then it's not available to residents.
Great.
It'll be at 6:00 p.m. 16:00.
Commissioner West?
16:00.
Will those meetings be recorded so that we could watch them if we do not attend?
We weren't, we were trying to do them live, so we weren't doing them on Zoom, because we had, wanted to have more of a community discussion. We did one before on Zoom, and we had 200 people in the Zoom. And that doesn't really facilitate a good conversation. So I don't think we're going to be set up to record them.
Okay, thanks.
It seems like you should have had a meeting more a little north, you know, where a lot of these, you know, McKinleyville is always been picked to be the development of the county for housing, and yet, you know, Southern Eureka, they can drive there, but it would have been nice to have one in McKinleyville area.
Let me see what we can do. I was actually thinking about that, and I'm not going to, certainly not going to disagree with you on that. I'm trying to balance a little bit between the urgency of needing to address this issue and not wanting to have it go on forever and ever, and really wanting to allow the discussion to progress to the Planning Commission in a timely manner. What we are planning on doing is to bring a workshop to the Planning Commission, which is, you know, more of an informal discussion, and then going back and taking all of that and making whatever revisions to the draft that are appropriate at that point, and then bringing it back for a public hearing. So we're not trying to force it through.
It's just, you're kind of south. It's just, you're kind of south for both of your meetings, and nothing the other way.
Yeah, okay. I do, though, appreciate, and that's a valid point, about the location being kind of on the south end, but I appreciate that, that you are going to have three meetings at least before a, a workshop here, and that that will also allow us to be part of the discussion about what, what changes could be made, and, and how we could improve the ordinance before it's actionable. So appreciate you trying to do that, vet that thoroughly.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Just maybe bring up one other thing, just so that you're aware, Nordic has been working on their project, and they've submitted some small changes. They're proposing to change from Atlantic salmon to yellowfin, or yellowtail. They're proposing to reduce the overall size by about 75,000 square feet. The overall net result is a decrease in power use, a, a decrease in the temperature of the effluent, a higher level of salinity in the effluent, which is actually a positive, because before there was more fresh water
Right.
in the effluent, and so it was not as full of salinity as the ocean is. And, and so we found that everything that they're proposing to do was consistent with what was reviewed in the EIR, and what was approved in the coastal development permit. And we have submitted a letter outlining that, and copied the coastal commission, the regional water board, and the, and CDFW. And it's our understanding that this is now heading to the coastal commission in September, and to the regional board in October.
Okay. Thanks for that update. Commissioner West?
I have a couple of questions, Steph. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask them now, or in the discussion items section?
Fine, now.
First one is, I had a question from somebody about if the McKinleville planning activities that are going on will be coming before us, and if so, kind of a ballpark of when we might see that.
Next year.
Next year, okay.
Yeah, we are still trying to finalize the, the draft that will be used as the project description for the preparation of the EIR.
Okay.
We've currently got the authorization to issue an RFP, the Request for Proposals, going to the Board of Supervisors either the eighth or the fifteenth. So, so that's coming out soon. The McKinleville Municipal Advisory Committee may take this discussion up again on August 23rd, but we won't have the entire, they want to see the, the entire wetlands analysis before taking final action, and we're not going to have the entire narrative text of the analysis. We'll have all the delineations to present, but whether that's adequate or not for them, I, I don't have an answer on that yet. So they may push that off till September.
And then my second question was, back to our discussion about noticing, I hear, hear your point, but I'm, I'm curious about, I think there might be other ways that we could, that, I think there are other ways to help, like, boost noticing that may not be such a high cost, but I was hoping that you could provide some more framework about, like, what, if any, sort of power the commission has to discuss noticing with applications.
So our, our noticing is a requirement of the ordinance. So to change it, you know, requires looking at the ordinance. We often extend our noticing.
Right.
So when there's a larger project, we often, or if there's huge parcels around something, we, we often extend it out. When we did Arcade Land Company down in Arcade Bottoms, we took that noticing out to 1,000 feet. We would have done that here, had we had any sense that there was going to be opposition. And as, as Cliff mentioned, we just didn't see that coming, because nobody responded to the, the project noticing that was sent out at the very point when the application was deemed complete. We noticed people within 1,000 feet. And, and we could go out, you know, for, forever, and you, you know this, and perhaps the commission has observed this, is the first complaint that people give when they oppose a project, is that they haven't been adequately noticed.
Absolutely. And I don't care where you draw the line, you'll still hear from those that expected a personal phone call from John. Otherwise, they haven't noticed, so it's, it's just what happens.
I hear that. I do think that there are things that, like, putting a sign on the property is a really, like, low-hanging fruit way to get more, because there, you, there is, you're never going to make everybody happy, but I hope that we can meet the needs of the community requests as much as possible. And this is just, we heard that it was an issue highlighted tonight, and I don't know if I'm necessarily interested in taking a strong action on it, I was just curious sort of like, what framework we were working in, in terms of.
One of the things I heard tonight, though, too, and, is that they wanted us to notice the whole community plan. And the whole community plan goes from Carlotta to Highway 101 to the north side of Heidsville.
Yeah.
And, and that's a big, big area.
And we're, we're talking easily, the cost of postage for a parcel in that sort of area alone would be quite cost prohibitive.
I appreciate you bringing that up, and at least suggesting that a notice on the property itself, at the obligation of the applicant, perhaps, could be something we could consider for, for situations like this. I, I also just hear you acknowledging that while the minimum threshold is set at whatever it is, you do use your discretion, and when you foresee a bigger community concern or, or interest, you go beyond that, and, and you've, that's what you just said, and that you just didn't have reason to expect that that would be required here.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is an old industrial site. You would expect industrial development to be on this site. This is frankly where some of the opponents, as Mr. Wheeler mentioned tonight, told him to go.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, well, and that was a good transition to planning commission discussion items. Are there any other items that commissioners wanted to bring up before we adjourn? I will just apologize again that I went longer than usual without calling for a break, but other than that, I guess we will adjourn. Thank you, I beg your forgiveness. We'll try better next time, and we will adjourn until August 17th. Thank you all.